The best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence. I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of October 20th. City Council will meet for a regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in Council Chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. The public is invited to attend the Colburn Road ribbon cutting today at 10:00 a.m. This project not only added sidewalks, a multi-use path, lighting, more traffic lanes, and drainage and stormwater systems, but also reconstructed an entire bridge. Those attending the ceremony are encouraged to enter at the west end of Northwest Colburn Road, travel east through the roundabout at Northwest Blue Parkway, and park east of the railroad bridge. Green Street is hosting a free spooky family-friendly double feature on October 24th. The movies are Hocus Pocus and Nightmare Before Christmas. Doors open at 5:30 p.m. Bring your crew, grab your chairs, and get ready for a family fun night inside the Green Street Market. Whistlestop will be providing themed treats and drinks at the event. The city is looking for a learning and development specialist to help shape the growth and success of its team. In this role, you'll design and deliver training programs, identify skill-building opportunities, and support employees in reaching their full potential. Apply today at lspop.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them when, say, 982, then route. Officers en route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, how can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here. We exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago. My personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got a call. She had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, in getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
Lee Summit has lots of local destinations, but where do you start? Green Street, a vibrant community space in the heart of downtown, is where Lee Summit comes together. Its three dynamic areas have something for everyone. Green Street Market is a modern event venue and home to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market. Green Street Lawn is a covered performance space hosting live music, family activities, and more. Green Street Grove is a mixture of gathering spaces, an immersive playground, and bold architectural features. And all three areas host community events year-round. So the next time you set out to enjoy the city you love, remember, meet at Green Street.
My parents built their first brand-new home in 1987 here in Lee Summit. It's pretty amazing to see what Lee Summit looked like in 1987 as a teenager. So vibrant. It was just growing, and there were a multitude of new things coming online. I was in the property management world, going to Rutgers College, and eventually, I raised my kids here. This community holds people. Every time you turn a corner, there's something new. 2013, there was a vacancy on the planning commission, and I thought, well, I'm going to give this a shot. When you're on the planning commission, the decisions that you're making are recommendations. Are they following our UDO? Does it fit in our comp and strat plan? When it gets to the council, that's the big decision. I served on the planning commission up until February of 2025.
Raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Donald Funk. The first few weeks here was an eye-opener. These are big projects. We're making decisions for a lot of people. Is this the right project for our community? Does it fit? Does it serve the needs of our community? We can look back and see what's been done. I mean, it's incredible when you see Paragon Star coming out of the ground, Oldham Village starting to come online, Buhi Drive Athletic Facility, Discovery Park, Streets of West Prior, 291 North and 50 Highway, our farmers market, the Green Street Project. You look at our downtown. My wife and I, we had the opportunity to visit a small town in Florida that was revamping their entire downtown. I met a guy, and he said, where are you from? And I said, Lee Summit, Missouri. And he's like, oh, my gosh, they're modeling our downtown off of what you guys have done. We're recognized nationally. I think the easiest way to put it is we're moving in the right direction. A safe, vibrant, happy community. And my hope and my reason for doing this is because I want to keep that hope and dream moving forward.
Everyone, can you hear me? Good. Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful day. Fill our hearts with your joy and our minds with your wisdom as we make decisions that honor you and bless our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session Number 53. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rader.
President.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle.
President.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Council discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Carlisle, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Council discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Consent agenda is approved also unanimously. Thank you. We go to Council Roundtable is next, where we do items of general interest, things going on in the community. Yes, Councilmember Shields.
Hey, Mayor. So there's been a few events recently that I wanted to recognize. We've been using Green Street to great effect. I went to a Critter Chat where they brought out hedgehogs, and my son loved that. And we also had yoga there this weekend, which was really fun. And then downtown has been really busy. They had haunted and historic spaces last weekend, and booze, barks, and badges will be this weekend. So always something great to do and come out and support local. Thank you.
Was there any, like, goats there, goat yoga, or dogs doing yoga or anything?
There were no goats or dogs, which is probably good because it was on the very nice new astroturf, and we wouldn't want to destroy all that. But lots of people, and it was great.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on council? Okay, we've got three, I think, three proclamations tonight. So we've got some visitors here, so I'll start with... Boy, I see some friendly faces that I know for World Polio Day. Can we start with that one? That would be a good one. Meet me all up here in the front right now. Nice crowd. Up here by me, and we'll face out this way. I'm going to take a photo.
Beto, you can come out. You're a rotarian.
Very nice. Okay, I'll read the proclamation. Okay, where, excuse me, whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised of professional and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographic areas, including more than 30 Rotary Clubs in the Kansas City region. Whereas the Sunrise Rotary Club and the Rotary Club of Lee Summit are an important part of this community. Whereas the motto, Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and helped to establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. Whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. Today, Rotary has contributed more than $2.6 billion and countless volunteer hours to protecting nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional 50 million per year, which would be further leveraged for maximum impact by an additional 100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2025 as World Polio Day. For coming, who's all here? Great group.
So we have a number of members from both Rotary Clubs in Lee Summit, the Sunrise and the Rotary Noon Club. And we're super grateful to have with us the always illustrious Carl Chinnery, who has personal experience with polio and has led our charge as a champion to eradicate it in not just our community, but across the world. Oh, I'm Laura Maxwell, and I'm currently serving as the president of the Noon Club. I would love to.
Sarah Taylor.
Amy Chinnery Valmassey, District Governor-elect.
Susan Kaufman.
Mike Collins.
Jean Chinnery's husband.
Carl Chinnery's daughter.
Roxanne Martin.
Ben Martin.
Chris Culbertson.
Good evening, Mike Maxon.
Jeff Thorne.
Ryan Elam.
Joel Wilson.
Mark Dunning.
Tracy Albers.
Joe Snook.
Beto Lopez.
Trish Carlisle.
Wow, we have a lot of do-gooders in the room tonight. Very good. Well, would you all mind taking... Thank you for coming, and would you mind taking a photo with me? We're going to... Cheryl's over here, so can you all kind of squeeze in as tight as you possibly can? Thank you all again. Oh, let's do Toys for Tots. I know about this. One of our councilmembers made sure we got it on early this year so we could... You want to come down here with me? Who's here with Toys for Tots? There we go. All right. Whereas Toys for Tots began in 1947 when Major Bill Hendricks, with the U.S. Marine Corps Forces Reserve and a group of marine reservists in Los Angeles, collected and distributed 5,000 toys to children. Major Hendricks' 1947 campaign was so successful that the Marine Corps adopted Toys for Tots the next year, expanding it into the nationwide campaign. In 1948, Marine Corps Reserve conducted Toys for Tots campaigns at marine reserve centers across the country. Since then, the United States Marine Corps has conducted successful nationwide campaigns during the holiday season each year. The initial objective, which remains the hallmark of the program today, is to bring the joy of Christmas to America's less fortunate children. Toys for Tots plays an active role in the development of America's most valuable natural resource, our children. To help less fortunate children throughout the United States experience the joy of Christmas, to unite all members of local communities in a common cause for three months each year during the annual toy collection and distribution campaign, and to contribute to better communities in the future. Whereas members of the Simpson-Hoggett Detachment 984 Marine Corps League have actively supported the Toys for Tots organization and collection of toys from local businesses and organizations in the City of Lee Summit and surrounding communities. In 2023, the Kansas City Toys for Tots served 273 organizations, 424 individual families, collected over 64,000 toys, and supported 44 Toys for Tots events. In 2024, they exceeded their totals, helping an additional 7,000 children. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, I do hereby proclaim December 2025 as Toys for Tots Month. Those are some impressive numbers. And they've gotten bigger and bigger. I thought 5,000 in 1947 was a big deal, but wow, it just kept going and going. So this is really wonderful. Would you all introduce yourselves and say a few words?
Dale Mellon. I'm currently the Commandant of Simpson-Hoggett Detachment.
Joel Wilson.
Stephen Solins. I might add as well that the uniform I'm wearing is indicative of the very, very first uniform worn by our patriot ancestors when the Marine Corps stormed the beaches of Bermuda three March 1776. when the Marine Corps stormed the beaches of Bermuda three March 1776. We were only four months old, and this is the, this is the uniform that they wore. This is a Continental Marine Corps uniform. Thank you.
Thank you for wearing it and showing us and sharing with us, and thank you for Toys for Tots. It really does make a difference, and I love the fact that you got ahead of it this year and got here in front of us. So do it again next year, and we'll keep supporting you. All right, so how about a photo real quick? Okay, we have one more. This is National Family Literacy Day. Hey Joel.
You don't mind if we get the proclamation to him?
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Minor, it's all in the details.
Thank you for coming. All right, okay, here we go. I'll jump in the middle. All right, whereas National Family Literacy Day, established by the 103rd Congress in 1994 and now marking the 31st anniversary on November 1st, 2025, highlights the importance of reading and learning for the entire family and emphasizes the impact that parents have on their children's learning. Whereas this day is celebrated across America each year and focuses on special activities and events that showcase the importance of family literacy programs that empower families and build a nation of readers. Literacy programs across the United States will observe National Family Literacy Day by holding readathons, book drives, workshops, and family activities at schools, libraries, and community centers to encourage literacy. Whereas as many as one in six adults struggle with reading and writing, and by learning to read, individuals can gain self-respect and competence and strive toward goals that otherwise would not be achievable. The National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, nonpolitical, volunteer women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children and adults. Whereas education being one of the, one of the cornerstones of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution Prairie Chapter is committed to increasing literacy by promoting and supporting literacy programs. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee's Summit, I do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2025 as National Family Literacy Day. Assuming you're with the National Daughter, Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution.
We are.
Hello, I'm Regina Kraus, and I am the Regent of Prairie Chapter.
I'm Cindy Williams, I'm the Registrar of Prairie Chapter. I'm also her Chapter Registrar, Chair, and National Vice Chair of Communications for Literacy Promotion.
Well, you do a great job with educating us as to different issues such as World Literacy Day, but there are other things that you do, so thank you for your consistent activity and engagement with us, very much so. Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Okay, that was a very nice way to start things off this evening, but we're gonna have to transition to business. So, looks like we've got some public hearings. So therefore... We have, we have one public hearing. I'm gonna close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 5A. This is a preliminary development plan for a one duplex building. 102 Northwest Orchard Street, Stephen Freilich is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise to be sworn in by the city clerk? All right, staff's gonna do the presentation first.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Shannon McGuire, Planning Manager. Please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 15.
All right, please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 15.
All right, so the application before you today is seeking approval for PDP to construct a 3,200 square foot, two-family structure located at 102 Northwest Orchard Street. Due to the subject property being in a planned zoning district, that does necessitate the approval of PDP to construct that structure. The proposed application before you today does meet all UDO standards and is not requesting any modifications. Currently, the subject site is a vacant residential property just on the north side of Northwest Orchard Street, kind of between Northwest Olive and Northwest Central Street. It is currently zoned RP2, and all the properties surrounding are zoned RP2 as well. The surrounding neighborhood is a mix of existing single-family and two-family homes, as you can see here. The proposed property is, again, meeting all UDO requirements. They are providing the minimum, or the UDO-required amount of parking spaces, and is approximately, the site itself is approximately 0.48 acres. So the existing, there are existing sanitary sewer and water lines just adjacent, so they'll be utilizing the existing infrastructure out there. In 2026, there is a Public Works CIP project that will do some work along northeast Orchard there to kind of help alleviate any of the stormwater issues that are currently out there. But in the interim, one of the requirements is to install a swale on the east property line until such time that CIP project does happen. The proposed duplex is consistent and compatible with the surrounding single and two-family homes and does use the same type of materials that we see commonly throughout the neighborhood and the community as a whole, to include LP lap siding, LP trim, and your standard asphalt sheen grills. So here's just the kind of elevations on the sides. So with that, the conditions approval as outlined here and in the staff letter, the application does meet the Ignite Comprehensive Plan and the requirements of the UDO and the Design and Construction Manual, and I can't answer any questions you have at this time, as well as the applicant is here as well to answer any questions you may have.
All right, very good. Thanks, sir. Any questions for the applicant or for staff? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward, okay? Any questions for staff before I exit this public hearing? Okay, Mr. Freilich, you good? Okay. Hearing over the testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? All right, then who's got this one? Councilmember Shields, would you please read?
Oh, I had a...
Oh, Councilmember Shields, yes.
Thank you. I have no issue with this application, just, I understand that it has to go through this process because it's in a planned zone, but just have to make my periodic comment that it seems silly that they had to go through a PDP to put a duplex that complies with also any requirements next to two other duplexes. I understand that we're working through hopefully some revisions to our code that will address some of these kind of issues, and I fully support those efforts. So hopefully, future applicants, well, happy applicants won't have to go through this whole process, so.
That was gonna be my response, is that you will shortly see us at CEDC to address that issue.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I did get out of, I did close the public session, so I'll go ahead and make a comment too that I like seeing somebody, you know, taking it on for us though and putting a duplex and a lot like this, so thank you for that. All right, then I'm gonna ask Councilmember Shields to read Bill Number 25-192.
Thank you. I move for second reading, Bill Number 25-192, An Ordinance Providing a Preliminary Development Plan for a Duplex on Approximately 0.53 Acres of Land Located at 102 Northwest Orchard Street, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33 Unified Development Ordinance of the Cut Ordinance for the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri.
Very good. I have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 25-192, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Any council discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Please record the vote. All votes are in. It does pass unanimously. It'll go to second reading, next council meeting, and thank you for investing in Lee's Summit. Okay, we're gonna go to a resolution, I believe, next. Oh, we have public comments. Yes, we do have a couple of public comments. Mr. Ibo, or Iba? We do allow public comments. We allow three minutes. We, it's supposed to be about any of the, any of the operations of the city. If you have materials or anything, please give them to the clerk, and she'll bring them to us, but...
Good evening, my name is Gideon from Houston, Texas. This is my colleague Pastor Ruthimi and Benga. We travel around the nation, and the city of Lee's Summit makes it 254 cities. We're visiting across the nation in 26 states. And the Lord placed it upon our heart to go around and sound the alarm to this beautiful nation that we had the privilege to come into about 30 years ago, and we have enjoyed the beauty of this nation with all the liberty. But unfortunately, which I believe you are very much aware, the development of moral breakdown in this city, in the nation. The violence, the hatred, and the fact that the very things that made America great that some of us saw, and we have to migrate to this beautiful nation, are being eroded. And whether we like it or not, it gives everyone that won't truly desire the peace and the prosperity of this nation a concern because there is no nation that can survive beyond the level of its morality. And a lot of resources are being spent by government all over the, you know, cities. Lee's City may be different, sorry, Lee's Summit, may be different, may not be experienced to a distance, but across in various cities, like you listen to the news, you will agree that, yes, there is a need for every God-fearing person to rise up and say, "We've gotta do something about this." You can't legislate against crime, against morality or immorality. You can't legislate against violence, it won't work. It's a thing of the heart. There's only one solution, and that is we, as a nation, returning back to God. I was so excited that this council started this meeting with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Now, if everyone that is in this nation, migrants, or those of you that have the grace to have been born into this beautiful nation, would truly uphold the values of the prayers that we just prayed and our pledge, we will experience peace everywhere in this nation. Unfortunately, that is not the case. The divisions. So what God placed in our heart to do is to go around and sound the alarm. And whether we like it or not, there is a teacher that no sensible person must ignore. That teacher is history. When we ignore history, we will have things repeated over and over again, the unfortunate outcome. So we have this privilege to come in here this evening.
Sir, we're gonna have to have you stop at this point, so. We only do three minutes because I have other public comments.
We appreciate it a great deal that we have the privilege to stand here this evening. Thank you so much. God bless you. We have some flyers, we'll leave them behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good, okay. We will now go to Ms. Follenweider.
Teresa Fullenweider, 5201 Northeast Maybrook Road. I use the Swiss German pronunciation this evening. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that rezoning that never needed to happen because I have a concern when I hear you tonight, and it's been Councilmember Shields that I've heard say it before. All these rezonings absolutely must go through a public hearing. They must, because there are people not catching things, and this was one of them. But in this case, this rezoning never needed to occur, and nobody caught that, or at least, nobody spoke up about it. And this one was a reconsideration. So here's the letter that Stephanie Mullins and her husband Derek Collins drafted. This was one, this was the first letter for the city council meeting. "We have no plans to have a baseball business. We purchased the land to build a single-family home and raise our family." They wanted an acreage. They didn't need to rezone. This didn't need to even happen. This is the letter that they wrote for the reconsideration. They write, "My point in illustrating this is that we have never intended to run a baseball business. We just would like to build our dream home in the community that we love and are raising our children in." Again, did not need to rezone. Josh Johnson, though, makes it sound like, little deception here, "For the purposes of bringing a property into compliance and zoning ordinance for the construction of a single-family residence on the property, under the UDO, the minimum lot size for the property is 10 acres. Since the property is 3.85, the applicant was advised to rezone." RDR, RLL, which have minimum lot, lot sizes of one acre and point... Never is there any mention of just needing to change setbacks, make those setbacks more lenient. Yet there's Matthew Schlisch's site plan. He knew, he knew, he knew it could be done without rezoning. He knew, there's his other picture. "I don't know how you're gonna get that house hooked to the septic system over here, but I suppose he had to show us a sanitary sewer system, but it's way over here. I don't know how that works. I guess you use a few grinder pumps to pump it up here and then have it work."
All right, thank you, Ms. Follenweider. I can't say this version.
One last thing.
Ms. Follenweider, you've done this to me many times, where you do one last thing, and then you end up insulting me or somebody, so no, we're done.
I think it's important for the, for the council to understand what I went through.
Three minutes is all you get. This is all, but you've, you've, you've taken advantage of me too many times, you know that. No, we're gonna move on.
I'll bring this back.
Please do. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're gonna go to first ordinances, I believe. Ordnances from committee, that is. No, we're doing a resolution. Ms. Fowler O'Connor, would you please read Resolution Number 25-23?
Yes, Resolution Number 25-23, a resolution adopting the city council scheduled meetings for 2026.
All right, thank you. So we have, this is the resolution we do where we try to schedule the meetings for the next year, and we look at the dates. Staff does a great job of trying to project when we're gonna be at MML, when we're gonna be at NLC, National League of Cities. However, sometimes councilmembers say, "Oh, are we really gonna have, you know, a meeting, you know, on December 17?" meeting, you know, on December 23rd?" And we might say, "Oh, we might want to think about that." So if you've looked at these dates, let me look at the dates real quick before we pass I've seen this before, but let me just take a quick peek. So we're going to have, if you notice, we do three meetings almost every month. If we try to do the first three meetings unless something happens like the MML you see in February, and then the National League of Cities. So those months, we don't get a break at the very end of the month, like we typically do. All right. Are there any questions or discussion on this agenda? If you notice, in November, we have two dates we're missing. We might miss Councilmember Carlyle. She has let me know that she might miss a couple of dates with work in February and March. So those will be... But I will tell you that there's been a big push this year, 25, to get as much done as we could by the end of the year, big decisions, because we really don't like having long, crazy meetings during election season. So January, February, March are going to be a little bit lighter agendas, if at all possible. We try to push decisions. You don't like to make a decision with a council and then have a new council take over the next month. It's kind of awkward, so you just try to say, "Well, let's let the new council make the decision in April." So that's why you try to keep them lighter. Okay. If there's no discussion, I've got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Shields to adopt, a second by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass 9-0. Doesn't mean we can't amend it, just so you all know. If we need to amend it later on, something comes up, we certainly can. So thank you all. All right. Now we go to proposed ordinances forward from committee. These will take two readings, because they came from committee. We'll read them twice. Councilmember Rader, would you start us off with bill number 25 dash 193?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 193, in ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase hardware, software, and services through the State of Missouri Cooperative Purchasing Agreement with SHI International for a not-to-exceed amount of 1.15 million is set out in the FY '26 budget and authorizing the city manager to execute any subsequent documents necessary to obtain the same for the term of the agreement for the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 193 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass 9-0. Councilmember Rader, would you please read for adoption?
I read for adoption, bill number 25 dash 193, in ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase hardware, software, and services through the State of Missouri Cooperative Purchasing Agreement with SHI International for a not-to-exceed amount 1.150 million is set out in the FY '26 budget and authorizing the city manager to execute any subsequent documents necessary to obtain the same for the term of the agreement for the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number 25 dash 193, by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Funk, would you please read bill number 25 dash 194?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase hardware, software, and services through the city of Mesa, Arizona through Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Agreement with SHI International not to exceed 1,150,000 is set out in the FY '26 budget and authorizing the city manager to execute any subsequent documents necessary to obtain the same for the other term of the agreement.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 194 by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Carlyle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Councilmember Funk, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase hardware, software, and services through the city of Mesa, Arizona through Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Agreement with SHI International not to exceed 1,150,000 is set out in the FY '26 budget and authorizing the city manager to execute any subsequent documents necessary to obtain the same for the term of the agreement.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number 25 dash 194, by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 25 dash 195?
Thank you. I move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 195, an ordinance approving the award of a one-year contract with four possible renewals for fuel services and products to John Moore Oil Company and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 195, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlyle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's unanimous. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of bill number 25 dash 195, an ordinance approving the award of a one-year contract with four possible renewals for fuel services and products to John Moore Oil Company and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number 25 dash 195, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's unanimous. It's adopted. Thank you. Councilmember Carlyle, would you please read, or Councilmember Shields, would you please read, bill number 25 dash 196?
Thank you. I move for second reading, bill number 25 dash 196, an ordinance approving the purchase of training and duty ammunition through the cooperative contract between the State of Missouri and Sunset Law Enforcement LLC in an amount not to exceed 132,532.15 and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 196, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlyle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of bill number 25 dash 196, an ordinance approving the purchase of training and duty ammunition through the cooperative contract between the State of Missouri and Sunset Law Enforcement LLC in an amount not to exceed 132,532.15 and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number 25 dash 196, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read bill number 25 dash 197?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading, bill number 25 dash 197, an ordinance approving amendment number 11 to the budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, is adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940 by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 197, by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Pryor, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number 25 dash 197, an ordinance approving amendment number 11 to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, is adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940 by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number 25 dash 197, by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read bill number 25 dash 198?
I can read it off here.
Second reading and adoption.
Is the agenda the same, Burridge? Can you look real quick, Mr. Head? Oh, you found it.
Somebody hit it under my lap.
Oh, okay. Somebody's messing with me. Okay.
I know. I get blamed for everything.
All right. He's got it.
I move to advance to second reading, bill number 25 dash 19, ordinance changing the name of the street for a certain segment of Southwest Conservatory Drive to Southwest Stallion Way in the Purgatory Park Residential Subdivision all within the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri.
It was the same. I just checked it. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 198, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number 25 dash 198, an ordinance changing the name of the street for a certain segment of Southwest Conservatory Drive to Southwest Stallion Way in the Purgatory Park Residential Subdivision all within the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 198, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 25 dash 199?
I move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 199, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ number 2025 dash 070 for professional engineering services for Shear Road Reconstruction Ward Road to M291 by and between the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri and Lochmuller Group Incorporated for an amount not to exceed 1,249,297 and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 199, by Councilmember Hodges. I need a second. Thank you. I have a second by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for adoption of bill number 25 dash 199, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ number 2025 dash 070 for professional engineering services for Shear Road Reconstruction Ward Road to M291 by and between the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri and Lochmuller Group Incorporated for an amount not to exceed 1,249,297 and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to adoption, bill number 25 dash 199, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlyle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 25 dash 200?
Thank you. I move for second reading, bill number 25 dash 200, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a service transportation block grant program funding agreement between the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission related to the public improvement project designated as federal project number STBG 3338407, Shear Road Reconstruction Ward Road to Jefferson Street within the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 200, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Mayor Patim Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does move to seek a second reading unanimously. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of bill number 25 dash 200, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a service transportation block grant program funding agreement between the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission related to the public improvements project designated as federal project number STBG 3338407, Shear Road Reconstruction Ward Road to Jefferson Street within the city limits of Lee Summitt, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number 25 dash 200, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Rader, would you please read bill number 25 dash 201?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 201, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 718 for the Sidewalk Gap Project Phase Two to Phoenix Concrete LLC in the amount of 561,957.80 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 201, by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Carlyle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does go to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Rader, would you please?
Thank you. I moved for adoption, bill number 25 dash 201, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 718 for the Sidewalk Gap Project Phase Two, Phoenix to Phoenix Concrete LLC in the amount of 561,957.80 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number 25 dash 201, by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Now we're going to go to proposed ordinances, first reading. Councilmember Funk, would you start us off with bill number 25 dash 202?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, bill number 25 dash 202, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri through the Parks and Recreation Board and the Junior College District of Metropolitan King City, Missouri, outlining the mutual sheltering and reunification agreement for the Metropolitan Community College and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 202, by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Carlyle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It goes to second reading, 9-0. Thank you. And Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 25 dash 203?
I advance to second reading, bill number 25 dash 203, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Lee Summitt, Missouri through the Parks and Rec Board and Jackson County, Missouri, for the Trip the Light Fantastic Bicycle Ride Through Christmas in the Park Event and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 203, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? You know it's about Christmas time when we're doing Toys R'Tots and then bicycle rides through the park. And Councilmember Pryor, yes?
Thank you. Is this something kids can participate in? Oh, good.
Yeah.
And then just a random thought. I wonder if they're finally going to get rid of the sign that says "Brought to you by Frank White" now that he's not there?
Probably.
Hopefully. It should have said "Brought to you by the taxpayers," but yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's unanimous. Goes to second reading. Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Looks like some committees were busy. This is our last meeting of this month. We have two meetings next month. Councilmember Shields?
As you point out, it's the last meeting of the month, so I will remind everyone we've got Finance and Budget Committee November 3rd, 4:00 p.m. in chambers.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Okay, so I have to find my little write-up thing that Mr. Park writes me up. So this was, I didn't do this last week, but we met last Monday. Public Works Committee meeting, we requested a, oh, no, hold on. I have to find it. Well, I mean, I'll just give you a summary. Oh, no, here's the summary. Okay, we recommended approval of $4 million federal grant and design contract for the Shear Rose Phase One Ward Road to 291 Highway Project. We also completed our work on the solid waste priority goal. We finished developing a residential waste contracting request for proposals. We asked that staff advance the proposed RFP to city council for consideration, and I think that will be on a November agenda. This would be to review the RFP for advertisement, and any decision to contract would come after the proposals are submitted sometime shortly after the New Year. And then all of the ordinances we did. But that was it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, council comments? Not seeing any. We do have a staff roundtable. There's a report in there. I'll let Mr. Dunning speak to that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So the annual stormwater regulatory report is one that is required for compliance for stormwater regulations, so it's a written report that helps us stay in compliance with stormwater controls and things of that nature. So that's what the written report's about. We do have a lot of street closures going on throughout the city. You know, pay attention to, I think you're receiving notifications of those. Some of the notable ones, we have opened a few. We did the Colburn Road opening on Monday. Sampson Road on the southwest area of the city is now open. We replaced that bridge and did a lot of improvements down in that area, so that is open in good timing, because tomorrow we will shut down the intersection of Shear and Pryor, which will be disruptive. I want to acknowledge that our fire station number seven is right there. We are going to, we have coordinated with the contractor to minimize the amount of disruption for our emergency response, so that is well-coordinated on that front. I reported the access to the Colburn Road Library is now in place and functional, so we're happy about that. That was not a city project, but one that we had involvement in trying to get over the finish line. And last thing I'll share is our Creative Services Director, Cheryl Nash, has announced her retirement. Her last day with the city will be November 7th. Just thinking about... Just thinking about Cheryl's eight years with the city, I can tell you, I was part of the effort to kind of evolve our communications, our community engagement department, because at that time, we just had a public information officer working in the administration department, and each department was kind of called upon to do their own communications with the community. And so we put together a framework to bring forward a methodical growth in our public engagement tools and everything else that we do here at the city, and Cheryl was the leader of that effort to really evolve and grow that, we call it creative services, it's our public engagement, communications, media relations, all kinds of things, communication. So very proud of her eight years here at the city, and we wish her well in retirement.
She's just mic dropping Green Street and then walking out. All right. Before we, we have to read into closed session, but I just acknowledge the Planning Commission Chair is in the room, and aren't you on the review commission as well, charter review? So thanks for being here. Hopefully we did okay. Role modeled, hopefully. We have to go into closed session, so got some other business to take care of. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Section 61021 of the Vice Statutes, the State of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action, litigation involving a public governmental body, and any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, pursuant to Section 61021 of the Vice Statutes, the State of Missouri pertaining to the leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public governmental body, where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefore, pursuant to Section 621, 610219 of the Vice Statutes, the State of Missouri pertaining to the appropriation, including any discussion of work product on behalf of a public governmental body or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups, I move to enter closed session.
Thank you. A motion to go into closed session by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Funk? Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Mayor Patim Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye. Everybody have a good night, thank you.